Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Let us settle down. The 35th Regular Session of the 20th Council, Cagayan de Oro City, will please come to order. Everybody rise for the invocation by the Honorable Counselor Agasuan, followed by the singing of the Lupang Hinirang and the Cagayan de Oro March.
Let us be aware of God's presence in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. Lord, you are the law giver, and it is law that whoever comes to you shall be renewed in strength. So, Lord, we invoke and we ask your strength and guidance and wisdom that we may be able to perform in service for the people of Cagayan de Oro. This we ask in your name. Amen.
Thank you very much again to everybody. Good afternoon. Mr. Secretary, please do the roll call and determine if there is a corum.
Honorable Joselyn B. Rodriguez, City Vice Mayor, on leave for the First District Councilors. Honorable Agapito E. Roberto Giswan, Honorable Roger J. Abadai, Honorable J.R. Pasqual, Honorable Aimy Rose P. Moreno, Honorable Romeo V. Calizo, Presiding Officer Pro Tempore, Honorable George Isgokking, Honorable Jose P.P.S. Abu Junior, Honorable Malvern I. Esparcia. For the Second District Councilors, Honorable Ibuna Yasine B. Imano, Honorable Maria Lordes Isgaani, Honorable Jolene Mercedes El Balaba, Honorable James K. Judith II, Honorable Ian Mark Yunakaya, Honorable Edgar S. Cabanlas, Honorable Christian Rustico M. Atchas, Honorable Suzette G. Magtahas Daba. For the Ex-Officiant Members, Honorable Yan Lam Es Lim, Ligan ng mga barangay President, and Honorable John Michael El Seno, City SK Federation President. There is corum, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Thank you very much. So, there's a corum. Let us proceed. Masig matingala atong mga guest gallery. Our Vice Mayor and Presiding Officer is currently on leave. So, as the Presiding Officer Pro Tempore, I'll be taking over the presiding in today's session. So, let's proceed. The Majority Floor Leader, Honorable Edgar Cabanlas, is recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Presiding Officer, General Caliso. Good afternoon to everyone who are the guests that we have here this afternoon, members of the City Council, members of the media, people of Cagayan de Oro. Again, good afternoon. Move to dispense the reading of the previous minutes of the Regular Session of this Council and consider the furnishing of the Capish de Robe as reading itself.
Move for dispensation. Any second? Move and seconded. Approve.
Move for the approval of the minutes of the previous Regular Session of April 17, 2023, Mr. Chairman.
So, move for approval of the previous minutes, the minutes of the previous meeting. Any second? So, move and seconded. Approve.
Move for approval on second and final reading.
So, move. Any second? Approve.
Okay. Now, Mr. Chairman, for the information of the body, we have two appearances this afternoon. We dispense with the special reports portion to allow guests and visitors.
So, they move to suspend the rules?
And first, we have the proposed motion number 2023 to hear in need of legislation, the Project Manager of Relief International Philippines about the objectives, components, and activities of their project, risk communication, and community engagement, RCC, technical support to last mile COVID-19 vaccination and routine immunization. And we have a visitor here, Mr. Louis Martin Soquamo. And of course, the proposed motion number two is motion number 2023, the six, to hear in need of legislation, the General Manager, and the Board of Directors, Chairperson of the Cagayan de Oro Water District, COWU, regarding these water supply problems in the city per special report of the Presiding Officer, General Counselor General Romeo Caliso. City Counselor during the 34th Regular Session last April 17, 2023, move to suspend the rules to allow non-members to address the City Council.
Move to suspend the rules. Any second? So, move and seconded. Any manifestation? Counselor Judith.
Mister Chairman, maupay. Gusto lang ako, klaro lang ako for the record, kung mayunta duha mani karoon ka kining proposed motion sa on appearance, ang una is proposed motion number 2023-5, and then ang ikaduha proposed motion number 2023-6, but ba nagpasabot boss torques, Mister Chairman? Na ikalimaw, ikau nom na ni, na sukad-sukad nga appearances sa atong, sa 20th City Council, mo bang but pasabot ano? Okay. Tana salamat.
So...
So, may request, Mr. Chairman, to recognize our ruling.
Yeah. So, move for suspension of the rules. Any second again? Seconded. So, let us suspend the rules.
May request, Mister Chairman, that Mr. Louis Martin Soquano, Project Manager of Relief International Philippines, be recognized.
Mister Louis Martin Soquano is recognized. Please come forward, sir.
Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, Mister Chairman, and to all of the members of sa City Council of Cagayan de Oro, and to all of the guests, and to the people of Cagayan de Oro. On behalf of Sir Louis Martin Soquano, I am EG Lacra, the Communications for Development Specialist of Relief International and UNICEF Philippines. So, today we'll be presenting to you the technical support that we have provided in Cagayan de Oro City. Technically, we are here last January of 2023, and we will end our technical support on June of 2023. So, it will be a short six-month engagement. We are in close coordination and partnership with the Center for Health Development of the region in Northern Mindanao. So, we have, basically, our technical support is all about the risk communication and community engagement to last mile of COVID-19 vaccination and routine immunization. As for the technical support, we are here in Cagayan de Oro to provide capacity building and different activities for the health workers. So, we will be presenting a short PowerPoint for you to have an overview of what the technical support is all about, and what have we, what activities that we have already conducted for the last few months that we are here. By the way, we are in close coordination with the City Health Office of Cagayan de Oro City to implement all of the activities that we are intervening in the ground. So... So, to have an overview of the technical support, we are actually present in four regions. Region 4A, we have also in Region 6, and in Region 10, basically, in Cagayan de Oro and Iligan City. So, these cities are highly urbanized cities, Mister Chairman, and to all members of the council. And we are targeting this one because there are several reports that covers on the low immunization coverage in the city regarding the booster shots for COVID-19 vaccination. At the same time, we have low immunization coverage for the measles rubella and polio vaccine for children. And we also targeted to reach the far-flung areas in Cagayan de Oro City. At the same time, these are recommended by local authorities, Department of Health, and in support with UNICEF. The next one. Our objective is actually generally more about strengthening the subnational government in the development and implementation of the risk communication and community engagement. Generally, we are here in Cagayan de Oro to generate demand for the COVID-19 vaccination, at the same time for the upcoming measles rubella and bivalent oral polio vaccine supplemental immunization activity. So, what we already conducted are strengthening the capacity of all health workers in Cagayan de Oro City. So, Mister Chairman, we have already trained several barangay health workers, nurses, and also other volunteers and frontliners to conduct the risk communication and community engagement, basically giving them the key messages from Department of Health to address hesitancies and refusals of vaccination. We also improve awareness and understanding on the benefit of COVID-19 vaccination. In Cagayan de Oro, we have low coverage on the booster shots. So, we are here to technically support the City Health Office to increase the demand and ramp up the vaccination for COVID-19 vaccination. We also strengthen the community support to COVID-19 vaccination and continuing practice of preventive actions. And lastly, we are now facilitating access to feedback mechanism, at the same time, conduct social listening activities. So, these social listening activities, Mister Chairman, and to all members, we already tap the barangay health workers to do the house-to-house and group learning sessions in their respective areas and barangays to have a little bit of a survey of why people are still not getting vaccinated. So, we have a tool na ginagamit sa Nana nila for them to address it, and hopefully, on the next session or on the upcoming months that we will transition to ending the project or the technical support, we will be able to prepare and consolidate all of the data and present the consolidated result on why people are still hesitant and refuse vaccination and immunization. And, next please. So, because of the COVID-19 pandemic, there are cases where nakita na to, no? Na basing magka-outbreak or magkalat ang mga vaccine preventable diseases, especially the measles rubella and polio. So, on upcoming May of 2023, from May 2 to 31, we will be having, or the Department of Health is conducting, a nationwide measles rubella oral polio vaccine supplemental immunization activity. So, this supplemental immunization activity will target children from 0 to 59 months old. So, for oral polio vaccine, we are targeting... Next presentation, please. So, for this supplemental immunization activity, we target 95% of children to be fully immunized at the end of the month of May 2023. For measles and rubella, we are targeting to immunize children from 5 to 59 months old. And for oral polio vaccine, we are targeting to immunize 0 to 59 months old. So, we are encouraging all of the people in Cagayan de Oro, especially to all parents and guardians, to get their child immunized. At to sa mga health centers, and also we have vaccination posts and sites that they can refer their child to get immunized. Next presentation, please. Next, please. So, this is just an overview. In 2019, there is a case of polio outbreak. So, just for everyone to know, mas lala ang polio, it's because even if there is only one case of polio, it will be an emergency response, not just in Cagayan de Oro City, but potentially in the whole region or in the whole Mindanao. So, the reason why we are conducting the supplemental immunization activity to add doses of the measles rubella and the oral polio vaccine to our children, 0 to 59 months old, even if they have already been immunized from their schedules. So, these are additional shots for the children to get immunized of those vaccine preventable diseases. Next presentation, please. Next, please. So, we are conducting the supplemental immunization activity to aid the health workers' work since right now, the health system is really exhausted of the COVID-19 pandemic. So, we are trying our best to really bolster all of the health services and programs for the supplemental immunization activity to be implemented to get all children vaccinated. So, again, for the supplemental immunization activity, Mister Chairman, and to all members, we are targeting 95% of fully immunized children at the end of May of 2023. Next presentation. Next, please. Next, please. So, for this campaign, we are really rallying one key message that for measles, rubella, or TIP-DAS hangin, and polio, especially COVID-19, there is no cure, there is no medicine, but only vaccine. So, vaccine is a solution of all, to prevent these, to prevent these diseases or viruses na sobra kaayon makatakod, especially sa mga bata na very vulnerable, especially karoon. Now, we are on our season, na sa summer, so possibly na ay outbreak on TIP-DAS. So, to prevent that outbreak and to prevent the pagkalat, no? Sa atong city, we are implementing the supplemental immunization activity. Next, please. So, again, I would like to reiterate that for the measles and rubella vaccines, we are going to immunize 9 to 59 months old children, and also for the oral polio vaccine, we are immunizing 0 to 59 months old. Okay. So, the supplemental immunization activity will be on May 1 to 30, but since May 1 is a Labor Day, so there will be launching activities for Cagayan de Oro City on May 2. Specifically, we will be having a meeting with the City Health Office to lay down some, plot out some activities on what we could help and support. Next, please. So, these are the support that we need from the local government of Cagayan de Oro City, Mister Chairman, and to all members. So, the first one is... Next, please. The first one is, as mentioned on the order, craft a resolution to support the MRBOPV supplemental immunization activity, and also integrating messages and information about the continuous vaccination campaign and demand generation efforts for COVID-19 vaccination. And also, we had a courtesy with Vice Mayor last week, and we are very happy and we're very privileged to accept the challenge from her that she would be able to publish a video message, and not just for Vice Mayor, but also we are encouraging other local officials to publish to their social media or the official social media platforms of Cagayan de Oro City to support the measles rubella bivalent oral polio vaccine, SIA, and also promote the COVID-19 vaccination, especially the booster shots. And also, this is one of the things that we are in need of, especially our City Health Office, that they are in need of any social mobilization support and public awareness activities to influence constituents, specifically parents for MROPVCA and COVID-19 vaccination. And lastly, we would like to plead, we would like to express this message to all our local officials to support our health workers in terms of logistical needs, such as snacks, vehicles, and other assistance to help, and also, lastly, help address refusals and hesitancies about vaccination or immunization. So, that would be all for the technical support of Relief International, UNICEF, in close coordination with City Health Office. We hope to encourage more parents and encourage other constituents of Cagayan de Oro City to get their COVID-19 vaccination, and for parents to promote more the measles rubella and oral polio vaccine and get their child immunized. Thank you so much, Mister Chairman, and to all local officials.
Thank you very much to the already appraised officer.
I'm the Communications for Development Specialist.
Thank you very much. Before we ask questions to our invited resource person, let me first acknowledge the arrival of the Honorable J. Pasqual and the Honorable Aimy Moreno. They're here. So, do we have any reaction to the presentation? Yes, Counselor Abadai is recognized.
Thank you very much, Mister Presiding Officer, my colleagues in the 20th Council, and our visitors who are listening, watching us today's session. I would just like to clarify to the representative of receiver, RCC. Now, United States and other foreign countries has already retired their emergency status of COVID-19 in spite of the fact that they have high incidence of COVID until now. We have noticed that most of the establishment now, Cagayan de Oro alone, lax na ang kuwan about kining tryad, no? Does that mean to say this last mile, last mile COVID, it should be the last stage of campaign? Or do you still have the status of emergency about COVID in your own findings?
Yes, sir. Thank you so much for that. I would like to clarify that the technical assistance is, the last mile is for the technical assistance of the risk communication and community engagement. But for the local efforts and the national efforts for COVID-19 vaccination, it's still continuing, and we are still adapting and delivering key messages for the health workers to still encourage individuals who are still hesitant and reluctant to get their COVID-19 vaccinations.
Thank you very much.
Any more reaction? Ah, yes, the Honorable James Judith.
Mister Chairman, is Ogg...
Mr. Chair, it's Ogsa atong tinahod ng mga kauban sa konseryo atong mga bisita maupay. Ang ako lang, Mr. Chair, na hanay naman, napresenta naman bali sa mamumulong ang kabahin sa kiningrist sa ilang pundo kung unsa by ilang paghimoon. Ang ako lang pangutahan na, Anika Ron, natatawag naman kung unsa by nagingyong katuyuan ubahin sa atong last mile COVID-19 immunization o routine nga immunization. Ang ako lang pangutahan na, Anika Ron, saan nga kabahin sa konseryo? Unsa may among matabang? Unsa giginala ninyo? Kaya technical assistance ninyo? Kinalaban ninyo? Pinansya sa amo or internposino objection? Unsa ba? Nagasalamat.
Thank you so much, sir. We have actually plotted out the support that we needed from the local government. The first one is to craft a resolution for the local officials to support or for the entire Cagayan de Oro City to support the MRBOPV supplemental immunization, integrating the continuous efforts for COVID-19 vaccination. At the same time, we are encouraging all local officials to have a message of support regarding MROPV and COVID-19 to be published on their personal social media accounts and also the official social media accounts of Cagayan de Oro City. And lastly, for the support of our health workers. So whatever assistance that will be offered by the Council regarding social mobilization, public awareness, and logistical supports for the health workers would be very beneficial for them to elevate the local activities on upcoming May and also to the coming days for COVID-19 vaccination drive. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, anyway, your requests are lined up in one of the slides presented. So rest assured that to the first item, your first support will be referred to the Committee Concerned, Committee on Health. If there's really a need for a resolution to be crafted. For the rest, I think these are just automatic supports supposedly in supported initiatives of the RCCE. So any more reactions to the presentation? Yes, Counselor Abadis.
I sense that the request of the presenter now is immediate. So passing this request to the committee, I think it takes time. So I think it is not too much. We will pass a resolution just to accommodate the request of the good presenter or the RCCE request for support for the crafting of resolution for their purpose. I am moving, Mr. Chair.
There's a motion that we should craft an immediate resolution in support to the initiative of RCCE and second that. So subject to styling and probably subject to inclusion in the agenda items, said resolution will be crafted. So thank you very much to the RCCE. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you so much, everyone.
The second appearance here, the Chairman, is the General Manager and the Headperson of the Board of Directors of the Cagayan de Oro Water District. Me, we first recognize Engineer Antonio Young, the General Manager of the Water District.
Yeah, but before...
Before that, yes, but before that.
Yes, thank you.
Me, we have background there of this invitation, and it was, I think it was initiated by the Presiding Officer.
Yeah, maybe task a member of the Committee on Public Utilities, the Honorable Bernie Bitok Spasha.
So yes, me, I request that Counselor Bernie be recognized.
Mayong hapon gana tuntanan, our Presiding Officer, Mr. Chair, mayong hapon sa akong mga kauban, na sa atong mga nadia sa gallery, sa mga nananaw, na minaw Karun. Mayong hapon gana tuntanan. Mr. Chair, sa atong mga past sessions, there have been some special reports already that we received regarding the water crisis, especially sa atong mga subdivisions, sa oba na atong mga lugar, not only in District 1, but also in District 2. And munang niabot na aning apunto, Mr. Chair, because the last time, we had a committee hearing, ang ipatawag na to ang COWD to explain their side, kung komusta na ba ang kahintang. And we don't know the reason, but unfortunately, they did not show up. Wala sila nito nga. We don't know the reason or nakabot ba silang invitation. That's why on that, I remember, Mr. Chair, on that committee hearing, the committee, the members decided that the Presiding Officer, the Chairman of the Public Utilities should have a special report regarding this. Na sila mismo, ang COWD tawago na mismo the disciplinary para to tell us the real situation. You know, we've been talking about Cagayan de Oro as a highly urbanized city. We're talking about mga kulbak na kay na mga plans for Cagayan de Oro City. Niabot na ta sa mga artificial intelligence, sa mga CCTV, traffic na mga plans. But, poro na kalimotan na, ang pinaka basic is ang water, and everybody is complaining about it. So that's why, Mr. Chair, kita nalipay na sila na minaw sa atong panawagan na at least naman Karun madungga na to, kung unsa buagid ang sitwasyon Karun, unsa gid ang current na mga problema and unsa po'y mga possible solutions para makabaluhan talan, Mr. Chair. Nagasalamat.
Thank you very much to the Honorable Bernie Spasha. So back to the majority floor.
Initial statement by Counselor Spasha, me, I request the Chair to recognize Engineer Antonio Young, the General Manager, Cagayan de Oro Water District.
Engineer Young is recognized. Please come forward before the podium.
Good afternoon, Mr. Presiding Officer, and good afternoon also to the members of the 20th City Council. And first of all, I would like to take this opportunity to thank the City Council for inviting us to present our, the water situation in Cagayan de Oro City. I am joined by our Chairman of the Board, Ma'am Nelya Lee over there, and Ma'am Janet Florrendo, as well as the rest of the members of the Executive Committee or the Management Committee. So allow me to first present an overview about Water District, Cagayan de Oro City Water District for... Okay, sir. Next slide. So for the information of the 20th City Council, the Cagayan de Oro City Water District was formed by virtue of the Provincial Water Utilities Act of 1973 or the Presidential Decree 198. 198, so... And we were conferred with a conditional certificate of conformance on January 4, 1974. And then we were declared as a government-owned and controlled corporation by the Supreme Court in March 1992. And so in 1973, during the time of Nawasa, when it was formed as a water district by virtue of that presidential decree, we have 3,500 connections during the time. And as of the present, we have 108,406 connections. And then our pipelines during 1973 is only about 40 kilometers, and right now, we have about more than 600 kilometers. And then our supply capacity is only about 12,200 cubic meters per day. And right now, we are delivering or producing 209,000 cubic meters per day. Oh, this is about 209 million liters per day. So I just would like to emphasize that the Cagayan de Oro City Water District is the first water district created in the Philippines, and we will be celebrating our 50th anniversary this coming August 1, 2023. Next slide. So this is our cloud sources. We have the booster stations. We have transmission and distribution lines. And of course, support facilities such as power generators and reservoir. So in Cagayan de Oro City, we have nine wellfields where we installed production wells. We have, in the west side or in District 1, we have at Balulang. We have at Kalituan, and we have at Lumbya. And then for the east side, we have Macasandig. We have at Tablon, Puerto, Bugo, Makapaya, Kamamanan. And yeah, it's presented there in the screen. Next. And out of that nine wellfields, we have an existing, we have 28 production wells. So we have 28 production wells. So kani atong production wells, manasya atong ka-produce water and distributed around the city. So we have 19 in the east side or District 2, and then we have nine in the west side or District 1. So total of 28 production wells. So we have three booster station, one in Balulang, one in Macasandig, and one in Bugo. And then we have 15 reservoir and then one spring source in Malasag. So this is our facilities. And then for our, this is our schematic diagram of our distribution line in the east area. So basically, our production wells, it produces water and then it goes to our booster stations. And then from there, it would be treated with disinfectant, and we're using right now chlorine dioxide because it is safe. And then it will then be, we will then be using booster pumps to bring the waters to farthest area as well as to elevated areas. So this is the schematic diagram also for our west service area. Now for our cloud system supply, so our total system supply is that out of our production, 60%, or roughly 61%, is being produced by cloud alone. And then we are purchasing 80, that is about 129 million liters per day of water. And then we are buying bulk water from our bulk water supplier, Kobe, of about 80 million liters per day, 60 of which is being delivered in the west side. And then 20 is being delivered in the east side through our Kamamanan reservoir. And then for the bulk water supply, we have, in the west side, we have 60, as mentioned earlier, and 20 in the east side, and we have about 0.5 million liters per day to cater the demand of pag-ibig city homes. We have a bulk water supply from Hardvast. And then for our own, we have 129 million liters per day through our 25 production wells, operational as of today. So with regards to our cloud service area, so out of 80 barangays of Cagayan de Oro, we, in the west, there are 24 barangays, and in the east, there are 56 barangays. Out of the 80 barangays, we have served 64 barangays, or that would represent 80% of the total barangays in the city. And then the 16 barangays represents 20% is unserved. When we say unserved, we still don't have a pipeline in that area. That is like, for example, Mambuaya, Dansulihon, upper Kamamanan, and all the hinterland barangays of Cagayan de Oro. Now, out of the, so our total service area, which includes also Upol, we have 53 CDO barangays served in the east, and three of which are currently not being served. That is the Balubal, FSKataniko, and Indag areas. And in the west area, out of 24, 11 is currently being served by Water District, and 13, or 43%, is not being served by Cagayan de Oro Water District. And these are the hinterland barangays, the Vikingon, Bayanga, Bisigan, the farthest barangays, the Dansulihon and Mambuaya, and yeah, the farthest barangays and the elevated barangays in Cagayan de Oro. So for our critical areas, so looking at the pressure map, so we have those areas like the red ones. The red ones and the orange ones are the critical areas or the areas that do not have sufficient water pressure throughout the day. So when we see average, that's average pressure in a day. So in the leftmost of the Cagayan de Oro map, that represents, and the annex also, which is Upol. So that represents Upol and Ipunan and also the lower portion, the red and the orange, the Ipunan, the Balaos, Regency, Virginia Homes, Cambridge. And then in the middle portion, going towards the right, that is the Barra and Bulwa, portion of Bulwa. We have problems there right now. And then going towards the center, that's Kamamanan. And then on the tip side, after that river is the Makabalan and then portion of Lapasan. And then going towards the east, that's the Gusa, I mean Kugman in Billya Flora. So that are the identified critical areas of our supply service area of the Water District. So what are our programs and projects and strategies to address these problems of water supply in those areas presented in the previous slide? So these are our programs. But first, I would like to mention that we have a 6 million fund. So these are the identified projects that we have, I mean, these are the projects that we have implemented under this 6 million fund. The projects are being identified by the LGU, and we implement and make the program support and implement this. So we have the water supply system in Sontingon. We have supply system in Bulwa National High School. We have water supply system rehabilitation of Zone 6 and 9 in Kugman. And in 2019, we have a water supply system of Barangay Tagpang. In 2020, we have water supply system of Vergaya-Bogo Relocation Site, Spring Development at Kilakub-Pagatpat. And in 2022, last year, we have projects of water supply system for NHA Lumbya Heights Relocation Site and the barbed wire fence at production well number 35 to protect the production wells from vandalism also. And this, the corresponding on the right side, I don't know if it can be viewed, but the total project cost for six years is about 20 million or 15 million, something like that. And then additional to that, we have also incurred additional expenses to realign our pipes in order to facilitate the... in order to facilitate the implementation of projects such as road widening, drainage installations, and as well as bridge widening of the city and of DPWH. So in, for the last three years, we have incurred about twenty-five million for this realignment of our pipelines that are affected by these projects of the city as well as of the DPWH. And then for our short term and medium term and long term projects, we have here interconnection of Billya Flora to address the problem of Billya Flora. Drilling also, we have recommissioning of our Tablon Reservoir and Puerto Reservoir. And in order to manage the pressure, we have pipeline realignment projects as presented earlier. Pressure zoning, boundary zoning and west boundary zoning. Proposed two hundred mm Aluba Reservoir filling line, Macasandig. Proposed Tibasak Pipeline because we still have problems at Tibasak, portions of Tibasak, especially the, near the river view. Proposed production well thirty-three in Palalan, Lumbia. It's waiting for the finalization of, the completion of the, of the transmission line. And then for our medium term, we had pipeline rehabilitation of Ries, Bugo. Rehabilitation of water distribution system of Barangay Macabalan. Production well at Billya Flora, it's there. Construction of two hundred cubic, two hundred cubic meters ground reservoir and distribution line at Malasag, Kugman. And that would address problems in, in Zone Nine, Kugman, the elevated area. Proposed distribution pipeline for, for FSKatanico for the elevated areas in that, I think it's in portion of Tablon also and Kugman or Gusa. Proposed production well, distribution pipeline, spring source development and reservoir at Palalan, Tablon. Proposed distribution pipeline at Balubal. Proposed construction of reservoir septicage treatment facility under the septicage management program. For the long term, we have the pipeline rehabilitation projects, the water treatment plan, plant and facility. And then additional for the short term, medium and long term, we have the proposed production well number thirty-four at Talungan, Kalituan to address the relocation sites there. Rehab of the water supply system of Santa Cecilia, Sadivision, Gusa. Installation of a six hundred mm pressure sustaining and regulating valve at west bulk supply takeoff in order to manage the pressure as well as the flow of water because, yeah, to, to meet the demand at Lumbia Airport. And then medium term, proposed transmission pipeline, Upper Puerto. Proposed distribution pipeline at Upper Agusan. Proposed installation of this special valve. So our CAPEX requirement for this, for the short term, we are about, we have about eighty-seven million. And then for the medium term, we have about three hundred twenty-three million or three hundred twenty-two point five million. And for the long term, we have about one point five billion. All in all, our CAPEX requirement to address this program is about one point nine five billion. And I was, I forgot to mention also that in the, I would like to go back some slides. So like for this, in our data, the, basing on the complaints received by the office and basing also on our monitoring as we install pressure data loggers, online pressure data loggers in the field, these areas are experiencing not twenty-four hour supply of water and these areas covers about ten percent of the total service connection of the office. So our service connection is about one hundred eight thousand. And so ten percent would comprise about ten thousand cubic meter, ten thousand service connections. And out of that ten, the ten thousand, the population, because our, based on our, our survey, there are about average five person per household or five person per service connection. So that's about fifty thousand people that are experiencing low pressure to no water, especially during peak hours. But on, at the average, some of which are, have water probably on the wee hour of the day. But others have not. That's why, as a temporary solution, we deliver water to them using our water tankers. So again, the, those areas represents only ten percent of the total service connections of the Cagayan de Oro City, which is about one hundred eight thousand connections. So ten percent is only about ten thousand service connections. So that would be all, Mr. Presiding Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Engineer Young. Before we entertain reactions, I'd like to inform the body that these are the new staff of officers at the Cagayan de Oro Water District. The new manager, and we have here the new chairman of the board of directors. So we are now open to questions. Counselor Ian Mark Nakaya is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer, General Romeo Calizo. Congratulations to the newly installed general manager. You're just how many days old as a, as the general manager?
I took over last April one, so twenty-four days.
So twenty-four days old GM of Cagayan de Oro Water District.
By the end of the month, it will be the birthday of the general manager. I got the information.
So that's a double celebration on the same month. And much to that, Mr. Presiding Officer is, his organization is celebrating the fifty, it's fiftieth anniversary since its creation in nineteen seventy-three. So two thousand twenty-three is the fiftieth. And the board is planning to have a remarkable and perhaps more projects to commemorate the fifty, fifty years in the service to the Cagayanans. Anyway, the six million that was earmarked for Cagayan de Oro City Government to identify, the project was executed during our time as the chair of the Committee on Public Utilities. And the chairperson of the board then was Mr. Joel Valdilual. We have passed twin resolutions. It's not joint because we were not gathered all together, but twin resolutions coming from the board and coming from the city council. So that there appears to be an agreement that the city mayor would identify the projects. In other words, if you count the more than fifteen years perhaps or twelve years from the time that it was executed, we should have six million times all these. Infra projects for the city government's priority projects. Tenerita, in the previous council, Mr. Presiding Officer, if we recall, Counselor Inday Dahino was adamant on asking why the sixty, six million pesos was not implemented during the previous council's time. Anyway, that's food for thought for the general manager that there was a history in, in this token of agreement so that the city government would not run after the Water District to pay for their taxes due to city government. They have to pay the, the amount that should have been for the city government. But we deferred then action on the tax collection on the basis that there are also local government units who filed before the courts. In fact, twelve, fifteen years ago, it was in the Court of Appeals already. But I, I guess it has not been resolved yet because the government legal corporate council have been, of course, defending the, the, the Loa and the Water Districts in the entire country. So there's no progress yet as to that point. But we hope that this would be continued by the Water District so that the, the council and the city mayor would have the chance and opportunity to identify the right and appropriate projects for implementation. That's one part, Mr. Presiding Officer. I would like to know the projects that perhaps would be considered by the new GM and the, the Water District as an institution. Considering that even in the low areas like Macabalan, Carmen, even Patag, Gusa, Macasandig, even Nazaret, Camamanan have been suffering for the low supply or pressure of water. And on the fiftieth year, we have reported that only eighty percent of the entire city have been provided with pipelines to connect water from the source to the households. And how about the twenty percent? That is why there are independent water suppliers who have been tapping resources from the river and from the surface so that they can also supply water in Lumbia, Dansulihon, Indahag, Balubal, and now going to Bugo, Agusan and Puerto. I hope that the one you mentioned that you are floating and providing pipelines to Upper Puerto would be the one that would connect the supply from the private, independent supplier so that there would be collaborations instead of competition in the area. So maybe perhaps you can comment or the general manager can perhaps guide the city council as to how we can proceed by jointly endeavoring, solving the persistent problem on water. And the other thing is, in the previous administration, Mr. Presiding Officer, I recall in the budget year of two thousand twenty, the executive have proposed five hundred million pesos so that the Water District can identify from its own administration to bolster the strength and capabilities of the Water District considering that according to them, during the time that they could not secure loan because Loa has not allowed them to pursue along that line. So the previous city mayor then offered with zero interest. And of course, the city council conceding with the idea that it is for the benefit and welfare of our people, we should support the five hundred million pesos. I understand, and to my recollection, the five hundred now would stand now four hundred million considering that the one hundred million was realigned for the COVID response. So I do not know if, what now is the stand of the Cagayan de Oro Water District because I've heard in the past that there was no proposal coming from the management of the Water District so that the four hundred million will be utilized for purposes of boosting the efforts of the Water District to supply water to the people of Cagayan de Oro. I don't know. Anyway, you have the board and your assistance to perhaps assist you in perhaps complying with some of the questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Nakaya. Your response, please.
Thank you, sir Nakaya, Counselor Nakaya for that. Yes, we have programs as presented in the slide before that we have programs to, to address the needs of these barangays, especially in the, in the east area and also in the west service area. So we have presented also our CAPEX requirement for the short term, medium term and long term, and we have about one point nine billion. And currently, presently, we are sourcing all avenues to address our CAPEX requirement, one of which would be through loans or probably water rate increase or grant or assistance from the government, national or local. And as mentioned by Honorable Ian Mark Nakaya, with regards to the grant, actually, it's not a grant, probably it's a private rental loan, we have submitted the proposals. And unfortunately, COVID-19 sit in and there was probably some priorities of the government during that time that which is to address the COVID and the COVID response. So we, but we, the Water Districts have beat at our program of works, so to speak. And unfortunately, that was not materialized because of the COVID. And until now, we are still in COVID. So that is why, as presented in our PowerPoint presentation, that we need at least 1.9 billion to improve the water service in the city. And we intend to align our programs with the development programs of the city. So, yeah, that's our concern right now, the financial aspect and how to address that, the avenues. It could be through bank, loans from the bank, loans from LWA, water rate increase, grants or, yeah, grant from the local or the national government.
Yes, thank you very much. Councilor Atias first, coming from the right, going to the left.
Mayong hapon. Thank you, Mr. Chair, General Romeo Calizo, to the members of this council, Francian Media, and to our newly elected General Manager, Antonio Yang. Mr. Chair, this is just only a query. I would like to know kung ang atong COWD, kung naaba siya mga future proposals sa barangay Puerto kay... Barangay Puerto is a commercial and agro-industrial barangay. We have more or less 12-kilometer stretch territory in the barangay. Then, there are only 40% of our territory na nasupayan sa tubig. Mostly, our territory from Poroc Sais up to Poroc Ocho is a upper part of the barangay. One of our problem, up until now, wala gi tubig ang area. Then nakita na mo ang barangay Puerto. From the east, is a progressive and developing barangay. The need to have water in this specific area, kinanglanon na to, Mr. Chair. When I was di po ng barangay, there was a proposal to have a subdivision, to have a mall in the area, banks in the area, and there are future development in the area. One of the problem is the water. May I know to the General Manager, kung inyo bang include sa inyong future plan or proposal ang paghatag ug tubig din ang area? And I would like to know kung, unsa'y naitabo sa, is that a reservoir in Poroc Sais? Up until now, di na ako makita kung ga'unsay function. So, kay pagtukod mga gudana, I was not informed kung unsa'y purpose ang kuwan, ang reservoir nga'y ingitukod, kung makasupry ba siya sa tubig. Kay up until now, people of barangay Puerto are keep asking, kung unsa'y purpose aning dako kayong reservoir, then in fact, we don't have enough water, especially sa upper parts of area. So, I think it's time na siguro nga inyong punduhan or inyong estadihan kung unsa'y atong mahimo. After all, I think as earlier, Councilor Nakaya said that the city council is willing to provide projects or intention for the development of Cagayan de Oro Water District. So, muling mga query nga gusto na ako mapangutan na, Mr. Chair, so that I can report to the people of barangay Puerto, kung ano up until now, wala mi tubig, no? Kay gaguyuro na nga mong tubig din na, Mr. Chair, if you observe, no? Ngang mga tao, matupa ug Agusan, magkargaskariton dalon sa taas, then nakadugang ug kalisod kay unsa'y ibaligya ang tubig. Other than that, Mr. Chair. So, thank you, Mr. Chair, that would be all.
Thank you very much, Councilor Atias. Two questions. Why 40% is only provided? And second, about the reservoir.
Okay.
GM, please.
Thank you for that question, Honorable Agawad Atias. So, as presented, the areas in Puerto Bugo, especially the lower portion, has no problem with water supply. We have abundant, we have production, I mean, we have booster stations in Bugo, in Trinitas. We have production wells there also. And in Agusan, we have production well as well and in Tablon. The areas that are not yet being served by Water District in that barangay is the Upper Puerto. So, we have reservoir in Upper Puerto. We have lines going there, but there's something wrong with our bulbs and we need to repair that one. But the purpose of the reservoir is to impound water coming from our booster station so that areas, although elevated, but still below the level of our reservoir can be served through that reservoir. But those areas beyond the reservoir, the level of reservoir, especially those, the upper portion of Puerto, we are currently having negotiation or talks with Manolo Fortich for a bulk water supply. And as well as we have, as presented there, we have programs also for a pipeline extension going up so that we can serve the areas, I mean, the people there living in the Upper Puerto. So, that's it.
About the reservoir?
Yeah, the reservoir is...
Just supplying the low-lying areas?
Yeah, but currently, right now, the Puerto reservoir is not being used and we are rehabilitating it. We are going to repair the valves at the... Ano 'yung nasay ilalomo sa overpass, sir? We're planning to repair that so that water from our Bugo Booster Station would go up and then that would serve also the portions just below the reservoir. So we have programs for that, as presented in our slide before.
So, clear, Councilor Atias. So, nagid sila 'yung plano ato. The Honorable Joey Abu is recognized.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to ask the General Manager from the Cagayan de Oro Water District. During the presentation, I don't know if I'm mistaken, please correct me. I, 20% of the barangays in Cagayan de Oro, wala na silbihan?
Unserve.
Unserve. And mostly, kininga mga barangay na address interland barangays. So my question is, is there any plan, the part of the Cagayan de Oro Water District, to serve these barangays as well? Or kung manggani matagaan sila or grants from the local government or the national government for that matter? Apil ba sa ilang plano ang mga interland barangays nga masilbihan pod ug tubig? And unsa'ong, unsa'y lang buhaton pod ana, lasin guys?
Please answer, GM.
Thank you for that, Honorable Agawad Abu. Yes, we have programs. We have pipeline extensions. We have, right now, we are, our approach is localized development of water system. So, because our existing water system or supply in the area could not reach the elevated portions of the city. So, we are looking at development of water source, like for example, tapping the EFS Catanico, developing the spring source at Malasag to, and also the bulk water supply from, coming from Manolo Fortich so that we can serve the areas of Upper Puerto, Balubal, and then EFS Catanico, the upper portions there. So, we are on that approach, Mr. Presiding Chair. And it is included also in our CAPEX requirement to serve those barangays. And in the western side, like for example, in Lumbya, we have production wells there. It's about to be operated and we're just waiting for the completion of the Department of Works and Highways for the installation of the transmission line so that would cater the supply demand at Lumbya. So we have also, what you call this? We have also consider the possibility of tapping these private operators for a bulk water supply. Right now, we have a discussion with a bulk water supplier for Macapaya. We have also discussion for bulk water supplier for Opol. And by July, the South Balibago will be delivering water for Yangs Bill and Pagibig City Homes. And we also considering discussion with other operators in the east side so that these elevated areas like Upper Kamamanan, Upper Puerto, will be served through bulk water supply, purchase of bulk water supply.
Thank you. Follow-up question by, the follow-up question, Councilor Joey? Do you have any follow-up to your question? You're raising your hand before going to the other councillors.
It's just a follow-up question. Certain barangays were mentioned, Upper Puerto, EFS Catanico, Balubal. And with respect to District 1, only Lumbya. My question is, how about those other barangays in the District 1? Like San Simon, Baikingon, Bayanga, Mamboaya, Pagatpat? These other barangays in the interland, is there any plan, the part of the COWD, to also cater? Because I presume and I believe that out of the 20% barangays that were not served by the said Water District, these are the barangays nga identified nga delay. Because precisely elevated man siya, so delay makakuhaan atong supply sa tubig na to. So my question is, with respect to these barangays, apart from Lumbya, does the Water District, Cagayan de Oro Water District, have plans of supplying? And if there is, how?
Yeah, yes, I forgot to mention earlier that part of the programs, especially in the long term, is the construction of a water treatment plant. That would be somewhere in Kabula or probably in Mamboaya. We're looking at the possibility of also tapping the river. And yes, so we have about, for the CAPEX requirement for that is about based on the USA study because that was assessed, we were assisted by USAID in making the feasibility study. The amount required to put up a water treatment plant to serve those areas and the excess would be delivered also in the lower portion of the west service area would be about 1 billion pesos. So, as presented, we need to, we need those CAPEX requirement and we are sourcing possible funds to address those. So yes, we have a water treatment plant for west service area.
Thank you very much. Councilor Aimi before Councilor Gurli.
Good afternoon, Mr. Presiding Chair, Honorable Romeo Calizo. And of course, ako ang mga colleagues and our guests and to everyone, good afternoon. Actually, this is just a supplementary query, supplementary to Councilor Joey Abu. And I saw kanina, no? I saw that, anyway, again, congratulations, Engineer Yang. I know that your job is not easy and it will not be easy because water is the number one, I guess, most pressing issue that Cagayanans are facing. Now, my question is, you had showed kanina na about the projects in the next 1 to 2 years, 5 years, and then 10 years. And it was quite numerous. But however, as you look at the programs or projects fulfilled by COWD, you will observe that only 1 to 2 are being materialized. So, with all the queries as to the options or what we can do to serve, no? The question, my question here is, are the projects that you had mentioned, I think in the 1 to 2 years, morag 7 proposals ni, no? Although they are just mere proposals, but how many are we looking at to be able to fulfill in the next 1 to 2 years? And sa karoon, ever since, no? Every time na i-muduo sa ako, it's usually there's always concern about water. You read my messages in Facebook, it's all mostly on water supply. And now that we have private investors, of course, nalipaita because they will be serving our constituents. However, if you look into it, it's incurred losses already, loss for COWD. While supposedly, COWD will be the one providing, therefore, aining or gaining profit. So, ang naitabo karoon, we have private investors who are earning instead of COWD. But of course, so as to provide basic services, no? We are opting for investors. But also, of course, we are looking forward that COWD will be able to fulfill its obligations. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Two questions. First, of these so many lined-up projects or programs, what are supposed to be prioritized? I think that's the point of Councilor Moreno. And second is, how come so many investors are coming in? This is supposed to be, the Water District should be there to serve.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for that, Honorable Councilor Moreno. Yes, with regards to our lined-up programs for the short term, medium term, and long term. So, for the short term, we have lined up about probably, if I'm not mistaken, 9. And some of which are ongoing already. And then, and yeah, some of which are ongoing, but we are looking about onto the medium term. But the short term can be accomplished within 1 to 2 years. And that would depend on the availability of the funds because currently, the office right now is looking for ways to address the CAPEX requirement for the implementation of these programs. And as mentioned earlier, so one of which is the grant, probably loan and probably water rate increase. And with the question about, so yeah, so we are prioritizing the projects based on the capacity of the office to implement that as well as to address the areas that are now experiencing a water supply problem. So that is our strategy right now. And then with regards to the private operators, well, we have plans to serve those elevated areas because it is our mandate. But as of the present, we have, we do not have the capacity. We don't have the pipelines there. But probably, we can discuss with a bulk water supply agreement with these private operators to serve the upper barangays. So that is an option also, Mr. Presiding Chair.
Thank you very much. So, Councilor Gurli is recognized.
Mayong hapon. Madam Chair, our Presiding Officer, to our managers, Akaudi, Engineer Yang. Ako lang pangutana, kay dugay namang gud ni siyang problema, ang tubig. And always gud ang tubig is tungod kay wala'y funds, no, lack of funds. And magloan, wala tagaan ug loan sa LWA. Can you tell us honestly, unsa'y standing, financial standing sa Akaudi, ganong bili'ta magtagaan ug loan sa LWA? Kay, like in any banks, kung delinquent ka na payer, maglisod na ka ug apply for loan again kay, di magkagabayad. So karoon, kay kani 1.9 billion, asama na to na kuha unsan na siyang napundo. So that would be through loads from the national government agencies like the LWA. LWA is a local water administration. So, unsa'ang ano, ang financial standing or ang kinibang record sa Akaudi, sa LWA?
Yes, thank you for that, Councilor Malaba. Actually, we are in good standing with our obligations with LWA. We have an existing loan with them, we have an existing loan also with DBP, but we are currently outstanding. We are, we pay them regularly. We don't have an arrears with them. And kwanan ni siya, sir, kininga LWA can provide loan, I mean, can grant loan to us. And I think the problem is ang availability of funds sa LWA, sad siguro. There are catering also, so many Water District applying for a loan.
Excuse me, Manager, do you have a standing loan with LWA?
LWA?
Yeah.
Yes, naapa, sir.
Naapa di. Okay.
And also with DBP, we have loans. Kadi na lang sila ang mga institutions that we have.
But we don't have any arrears whatsoever, so we pay regularly.
We pay regularly. Kay, decide kung makakuhaan kay ang, tawag ni, ang charges ano would be paid by our, kung na'y mga kuwan, kung na'y mga arrears in payment.
So maybe a follow-up question is, when do we expect to fully pay LWA?
Within the year na'y mo...
Within the year.
Within the year na'y... But I would like also to inform the city council that our current water rate is, that is 218 pesos for 10 cubic meters. That is since 2014, 2014.
Nine years.
Nine years, so about a decade, probably, almost. We're not able to implement water rate since 2014 and we know that crisis due to COVID and the Ukraine crisis also affects the business industry as well as the power and the fuel. So, all these expenses, no? We absorb that and that is why our reserves are fast depleting already. And if we cannot make some measures to increase our revenue, then we would have problems implementing our programs. But of course, we can go to LWA for a loan. We can go to DBP for a loan and we could ask also for a water rate increase if it's possible.
Okay. So, just one follow-up question from Councilor Gurli. Go ahead. And then we can accommodate, following parliamentary rules, probably we can accommodate 3 more councillors to ask after the follow-up.
Kining, one of your kining short, sabi ni, na-solution is to increase water rates. Ang problema lagi diha, dili mo sugot ang ato ang mga consumers because... because how can you increase water rates? Ngawa wala ganit sa lay tubig lagi, nagakadawat sa, gakaabot sa ilang balay, no? Ah, tapos kaning na pay rason-rason nga. So how do you, we cannot just let that thing go by na katung, ang water rate mo increase, nawala mas lay tubig. So muna siya lang...
Kwan siya, ma'am, no? Kaning, bali, ang water rate is not the only solution, nga mong kita na, but daghan ogasay avenue, loans, water rate, options is ya, to address our katung CAPEX requirement. And of course, the assistance from the government, may it be local or national, to help us address also our, I mean, CAPEX requirement. So those are the avenues that we are looking at para ma-address na'to ang atong programs.
Yeah, thank you very much. Uh, Councilor Goking is recognized.
Dagang salamat, Mr. Chair. I would like to recognize the very energetic Tony Young. I know him from Savior High School 84 and a very active chairperson, Nelia Lee. I'm just in tibing kayo, Mr. Chair, and to all my colleagues. I know ang atong Water District wants to improve a lot of things. The problem is our logistical support. Since I came in as councillor, we have been talking about water problems. Now that Tony mentioned about loans, during our encounter with the Bureau of Local Government Finance is doing business, we have a very good credit line. The city of Cagayan de Oro has 7.5 billion credit line with the Land Bank of the Philippines, nga natagana tag 1 billion on ingon nila revenue generating programs. Ang atong Land Bank is giving 2. something percent per annum for the next 25 years. 3 years, di ka mo bayad sa principal, you do not have to pay interest. So it is just an idea, Mr. Young. And together with the members of the Water District Board of Trustees, why look at luwa? Why look at other banks? We have Land Bank na'tay credit line of 7.5 billion. Ang source is coming from the Bureau of Local Government Finance, under the Department of Finance. So it's just an idea. I hatag sa'ko, nakurat ko nga, we are good paying local government. May tamu bayad sa loan. Imagine ang katung ilang hatag ng interest, over 2%? 3 years moratorium, wala'y bayad. So I know with that money, Mr. Young, you will be able to work to the betterment of Water District in the next 3 years. Pero ayokutanawa, ang City Council ang makatabang diya. Dagang salamat, mayong hapon.
Yeah, thank you very much, Councilor Goking. So this is a good cue to Cagayan de Oro Water District because really, our intention here is to work with you. It's just a matter of deciding a bold and critical decision. Councilor Judith is recognized.
Salamat, Mr. Chair. Kay ganira giko na ginamin ang dagang ko mga pangutana, kahain sa Water District, kay isyo gik kanikaron sa atong tanan. Una lang akong pagpasalamat day, or congratulations day, Engineer Young, sa imong bagong katungdanan o pagtudlo kanimo isip bagong General Manager Sakawd, og kal Misses Nelia Lee, mo'y bagong Chairman sa BOD. Inani lang, Mr. GM. Nakita mo ko na ako ganina, may ganyan moram siguro ngapunto, magkasinabot me ni Consial Malaba, kinabungat man niya ang luwa, og ang loans. So ako na lang pagkatubayan, dinasugda naman ni Consial Malaba. Kanira ngapunto, magkasinabot me, kundi may magkasinabot sa Ayuda, magkasinabot me aning ngapunto. Anga, ang ako lang, Engineer Young, di ba kaha nga, dili kayo mo daghan ug-loan sa luwa? Kay tungod ang isa ka sa akin na sayo, kung ako masayop, kay wala nag-usap ang inyong NWR or Non-Water Revenue? Ang akong pangutana karoon, Mr. Chair, ang Engineer Young, kung sa pilakakatuigan, naabay pag-usap ang inyong NWR. Kay ang team ayilan, kung maayaw pagdala, pagdumala sa Water District, mauman ang pagkibang og pagubos sa inyong NWR. Muna ang una na kong pangutana, daghan pa ni.
Yes, thank you, Honorable Kagawad James Judith. Yes, kaning na'tay loan sa luwa.
Yes.
And usahay kanin mag-estrategi, magyapon asa sa management and the board kung asata mag-apply ug loan depende sa rate, sa interest. So currently, dito ta sa DPP, kay they are offering lower rates, no? And in fact, napaganin mga adjustments pag yun sa atong existing na rate. So sa NRW, we have also a loan with DPP to finance our non-revenue water reduction program. So we started in 2020, at the end of 2021, December 31, 2021, we end, or the beginning of January 2022, nagstarta of 55% na NRW.
NRW, karoon.
55%. And at the end of December 2022, nababa na'to siya by 5%. So naatas sa 50%. And our board is challenging the management to even reduce that further to 10% for this year. So our target for this year is to lower our non-revenue water to 40% because our target in 2022 is only 4%. And we're able to manage to reduce that by 5%. So we're proud to inform the City Council that we're able to address that through our non-revenue water reduction programs.
Mr. Chair, sa, naaman kay teknisan, katung pwede, pwede minimo mabalik dito sa katung slide niya, adun ay HydroVast nga katung bulk water supplier niya, na'y katung nakabutang dito katung sa east og sa west, nga na atong sa east nga bahin sa atong dakbayan na ang 20 MLD, og sa west ang 60 MLD, di ba? Ang ako lang, ani, Mr. GM, kung ako masayop, di ba sa may westing nga bahin sa atong dakbayan, na ato gitugutan na'to ang South Balibago Resources Incorporated, SBRI? So sa akong, kung ako gumasayop, kinaaman ko na ilang bigit gapon ato sa pagiimmo sa mong kontrata, ang ilang saad maong nga gitugutan sila, kay muhatag sila og 10, or makasupply sila og 10 MLD. So di ba minus 10 MLD sagikinanlan sa westing nga bahin, 50 MLD? Ang kulang na lang na masupply sa westing nga bahin sa atong dakbayan?
No. Kwan siya, sir, no? Ang atong gay purchase sa Kobe, kaning Cagayan de Oro Bulk Water Supply Incorporated is 80,000 cubic meters per day.
Yes.
Ang 60 na sa east side, I mean, ang 60 na sa west side, ang 20 na sa east side. Sa Balibago, aga nagpurchase putasayla og 1 MLD karoon.
1 MLD.
1 MLD, mo-deliver sila, mag-start sila sa ilang delivery, karong July, para lang naasiya sa Pagibig City Homes and Yangsville subdivisions.
So dili gitingon nga, ang pagsulod ni South Balibago, maka naanday pag-asenso, bali, sa makasupply ng tubig sa pipila kamakabarangay sa First District?
Wala pa siya kay ongoing pa among discussion. Kay ang ilang capacity is 10 MLD, ang capacity sa ilang water treatment plant. But we are only buying 1 MLD for these 2 subdivisions. And right now, we are evaluating their proposal nga mag-supply sa katung mga ipunan katung like the Virginia Homes, the Cambridge, katung Balaus. So muna siya among gi, kamulong evaluate, and para nga maka venture misayla og kaning purchase of bulk water for a longer period of time.
Sunod ako pangutana, Mr. Chair. Pilamang gud ang ideal or required PSI ngayong masupply sa tibok, kinatibok ang dakbayan?
Ang required yun lugar nga pressure para sa balay is about 10 meters, no? 10 meters. Kanang sa imong kuwan, mga 5 to 10 meters diya sa imuhang water pressure. On the average, naapatas sa less than that. Sa na'y mga areas, pero na'y mga areas nga tagaskes, nga tanan na siya mga areas nga mugbo. But kaning upol ipunan, katungong dimension kaginina sir, nga upol ipunan, kamamanan, portion of kamamanan, portion of lapasan, portion of makabalan, moto sila mga areas nga experience karoon og less than 5 meters.
So kung imong basihan sa katung imong slide, naato dito ganina, on the average, halos tanan gud nga mga barangay sa atong dakbayan, wala gud muna kaabot sa ideal or required PSI. Kay ako nakita, halos naaman dito sa ubos pa sa 10 PSI. Kung imong mabata, kung ako masayop, Engineer Young, naato sa imong chart, katung average nga pressure as of January 2023, kung tanawan dimo, kasagara dito, wala gud ni abot sa gitawag na'to ideal or required PSI?
Ang atong ideal gud or required PSI, Honorable Kagawad, is kwan gud siya 15. Morag na siya 15 kilogram, at least 10 to 15 PSI or pounds per square inch. That is equivalent to mga 5 to 10 meters, or 6 to 10 meters, no? So vertical height meters, so muna siyang abto sa tubig vertikal eh. Sa atong average pressure as of January 2023, ang red na'to dito og orange, moni sila ang 0 to 6 PSI. No, dayon, ang katudayong light green naasiya sa 7 to 20 PSI ang average pressure sa kuwan, so...
So kung tanawan dimo, sa kinatibokan katung naasa imong chart, pilaragid ka mga barangay, sa atong dakbayan, ang inyong naka, nakasulod, muna ang gali PSI, pero wala mo naka-abreds PSI? Kung imong tanawan, kung imong sumadahan, naawa gandito imong chart.
Ah, yes, sir, yes, sir, oo.
Okay, dayon, dili ba kaha ang atong PSI, dili mo makaabot kay tungod sa inyong NRW?
Usana siya, sir.
Or mga water pill fridge?
Usana siya, sir, sa mga reasons nga, na'tay low pressure kaning leakages, mga pill fridges, moni sila ang uso sa mga reason mo, yataong gay address pod karoon.
So muna akong ingon nga, isa na siguro nga sumbanan, na dili mo basta-basta makaloon, niya kami pod, gibungat pod ni Consial Nakaya, nga na ay naka standby nga 500 million nga punto, pero nakuhaan na 100 million, so 400 na lang. Siguro ang among garantiya, kung amo magaling, kuna apo manggaling mong punto, base sa gibungat ni Consial Nakaya. Ipete na namo nga itugot sa inyo, pero na'y kondisyon, ngayong kibangan ang inyong NRW, og dugagan inyo ang inyong PSI, para nga makasupply gud, nga na'y saktong tubig kay samas karoon sa patag, di na lang ako ipakita, kay na'tay panahon, wala gud tawon sila'y tubig dito, ilan na kunokabulan?
Ah, yes, sir. Nagkaproblema ang patag, actually, nagkaproblema ang patag paingon sa bulwa. But early this week, ano, last week, naaddress na'to ang patag og katung mga bulwa nga ga-complain. Naamasan mo'y nakita gud nga mga leakages nga pong ipang-repair, og naapoy gipangkuwan nila kay na'y ng blakan, na'y nag-air lock, so nag-install ni mga air release valve para ma-release ang air inside the pipe. Sumoto siya, katung mga areas nga nag-complain sa patag, naaddress na siya. And katusang sa Tiri Hills, Apovel, og sa bulwa nga portions, naaddress na namo.
Ina kalitis mo gud siya, Engineer Young, ngunit akong gipadala dini sa City Council as of now.
Ah, okay.
Wala gapon sila, para lang sa imong kasayuran, wala gapon tubig ang among area sa may patag. Akong gipadala sa imong bostorts. Last nga pangutana, Mr. Chair. Dili man ko Engineer, Engineer Young, pero nakita po na ako sa imong chart, sa katung spring box sa Malasag, para man'to sa Second District, ang ipeton niyan'to, dili man'to sa kinatibokan sa dakbayan. Ang ako pangutana na karoon, naabay plano ang Cagayan de Oro Water District nga magbutang og spring box para dito sa Western District versus sa First District?
Water treatment plant ang atong base, atong giplanina, uh, Mr., uh, Kagawad?
So dili na takinanlan nga mag-counterpart pa nga spring box, kung naasa Second District, naapod sa First District na spring box?
Kung na'tay makita nga mga springs, ato na siyang i-utilized as our source, no? Additional source. But right now, sa atong program dito presented, we are planning to have a water treatment plant. So surface water ni siya, ang gikan sa river, atong itreat mo etong i-deliver sa atong mga concessioners.
Okay, damo ko'y sugud kanimo, pwede man ang kaning falls, bali nila ni Consial Pasqual, pwede na'to dito mo'y tinugdan, bali sa spring box paingon sa First District para masulba atong problema sa First District.
Pwede kayo, pwede kayo.
Dagang salamat, hon.
Thank you very much, Councilor Judith. Anyway, other details can be asked during, at the committee level. This will be a continuing discussion anyway. Before I'll turn it back to the majority pro leader, siguro, yes, some very critical questions from Councilor Bernice Parsha.
Salamat, Mr. Chair. Braga, pinalabasin ko, ako langing klaruhan para sa mga ordinaryong tao para makasabot lang. Dagang nakita gi pang mensyon, technical kayo ka na mga PSI, PSI, usahahan na'to ng diskutan. Okay. Permiero, allow me, Mr. Chair, para lang kuwan, una, ang kakulangon sa tubig sa Cagayan de Oro, sir, dili rason kay tungod kay kulang ta og water source?
Yes, sir.
So na ay tubig, dili'ta magunon ang halawa ni tubig tungod kay nangamalahan na ang Cagayan de Oro. Dili'ta na ang rason?
Dili, sir.
Okay. Sir, sa report ni mo, tama ba ko's? Aduna'tay 9 well fields og 28 production wells. Kanibatanan, sir, ga-work, dili tinoot ang history nga ng Uban diha depleted?
Ah, dili, sir. Kanang sa atong 28, pagka-karoon, 25 ang operational kay ang tuluan na for rehabilitation. Kaning dini sa atong makasandig, dini sa may depit sa eskwelahan.
Hmm.
Uh, kuwan na siya, elementary, kuwan na siya kaning natagak magunon among pump dito na obstruction. So amo pa na siyang i...
So tuluan wala nag-work karoon, sir?
Yes.
Pilan na nakabulan nga wala nag-work karoon?
Kanang sa, kaning sa kuwan, ta'tan na diri, sir, kaning sa makasandig, uh, kaning atong production well number 3A, dapat abay sa makasandig elementary school. So muna siya, usasamong program, gakong karong tuiga, nga amo na siyang i-rehab para nga maputback na motor operation.
So kung wala na nag-work, engineer, meaning to say, unsa effect ano under sa iyang mga pilak household ang apektado, ano, sir?
Kuwan mo na siya, sir, naaman na siya sa mga 300, uh, 200 cubic meters na lang, atong 200 cubic meters, uh, times 24, muna siyang number of household. Kung atong pwede masupplyan additional.
Okay, alright. Inanako kuwan on, Mr. Chair, okay. So na'tay mga wells na wala gud ga-function, karoon, naupulitan na inyo ng tulo, tulo, tulo.
Siya paspasun, ang tayo sa, kay gipangkawat ang iyang mga facilities, among i-repurchase ang items.
Okay. Kasabot me sa interlands walay tubig, that's why na dito karoon ang Uban, J Hydro, MCWS nag-support. Now, you mentioned aga ganina, mga makabalan, permiti, balik-balik, ipunan, patag. Pagmaingon ka, sir, nga no, less ang pressure huntod sa walay tubig, para makasabot ang ordinaryong tao, pasabot na, sir, muna dili, hinay or halos walay tubig sila because hinay ang pressure o ang pagtulod sa tubig, tama, sir?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
So unsa ang number one atong nakita nga solution diya na, tungod ba na kay na sila sa taas nga bahin?
Kana, usasa na siya kay na sila sa taas nga bahin.
So unsa urgent ano, sir, nga solusyon para kanin sila mapakusga ng ilang pressure?
Katung naasa mga taas nga bahin, atong gitanao dina nga magbutang ta og inline boosting, no, para nga musaka ang tubig dito sa taas. So magbutang ta og sump, na'tay booster dayon nga facility, booster pump.
Pero plano palang na engineer, wala pa na karoon gabuhat, di na naroon?
Wala pa, napanasa sa part sa atong program.
Because, Mr. Chair, ako nakita ganina, guapo tanan-tanan, pero puro pa word nga proposed. So meaning to say, para makabaluang tanan, wala pagid ni siya ginabuhat karoon, and proposal palang ni siya tanan, okay? Uh, last na lang, engineer, para mahuman na po kuwan ni, ang ato bang tubig karoon sa Water District? Makainon tanga safe imnon?
Yes, sir.
So kung gikan go sa gripo, kay karoon mga social, sa, sa, mga 90 sa una, buhi ramagapon meron kay gripo manui. Pero karoon ang mga tao, morag, munang makaduaan og gasto, kay lahi ang sa gripo, lahi po, mamalit na po, kuwan. So ikaw karoon, sir, naminaw talan tao, kung maan nakakaroon sa gripo, safe ra na imnon?
Yes, sir, safe siya for drinking, kay ginen sure ginatong nga sa mga farthest ends na agud kita'y gitawag nga residual sa atong disinfectant, kaning atong chlorine dioxide, kay usana siya sa mga requirements sa atong luwa and also sa Philippine National Center for Drinking Water that we maintain residual chlorine or residual chlorine dioxide in the service area. And regularly na'to siya gamonitor, every day ga kuha ta og, uh, water sample, atong gay subject to Bakti test, and also with the kaning atong monitoring sa residual chlorine. Every day ga kuha ta... And also with the kaning atong monitoring sa residual chlorine, every day ga kuha tao. We have different strategic uh locations for our sampling points.
Okay, Mr. Chair, last na again, sorry, nalaila akong ginot lang, base di ko kapulog, ane, kung di na kunin mo pangutana. Uh per household, atong gasyo nga at least makaconsumo tao 10 cubic, that's why na atay minimum gini ginabayad, tama?
Yeah, 10, 10.
Okay, now, sa imong report, na ta sa mapa nakared, atong identify some areas nga hinay ang pressure o hantod walay awas. So meaning to say, dili gud na sila, braga may ragud ng ilahang maconsumo. Kana ba nakabutang sa pulo, og kana nakabutang sa dilipula, the same lang giapon, bayad giapon sila sa minimum?
Sa atong current na uh policy, namo ko dito nga kung as long as nakakonek ka sa uh kung naakay water connection lugar sa Water District active ka, then you have to pay the minimum. But of course, na may mga consideration sa anang ang mga areas, so katong mga areas gud nga walay tubig, maanaman sila diha sa to, magcomplain then ato dahoyong i-adjust dahoyong ang ilahang billing para nga uh ma kuwan saan sila kay dili man lugar.
So ginadjust na to, sir.
Ginadjust atong base availability sa ilahang tubig kay na may atong monitoring dito. Ah naman tagi-install nga pressure data loggers, atong iverify kung na may tubig u wala ang mga mga areas. Dahil from there, maka-adjust dahil ta maka make tag adjustment.
Mr. Chair, uh ako lang ng tiyan ipangutana, hopefully ta na makita na sa COWD. Ato man naidentified ay mga lugar nga halos walay awas. Ta na dili puta, kung unsa kahinay ang awas o say wala, ta na dili puta nga nakapaspas mamutol dahoyong tubig. Tapos sa hayrabad, dugan din kay mabalik, tapos ang tao sakit kaayaw mubayad sa saktong bayaran na wala nila nakuang saktong servisyo sa tubig. Moro na, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you very much, uh Councilor Bernice Parsha. Uh let's go back to our Majority Floor Leader.
Uh thank you very much, uh Mr. Chairman. Just uh single question to the, to Tony. Tony, congratulations for your uh appointment, you deserve that.
Thank you, sir.
I think you're the most qualified engineer in the Water District to run the Water District. Uh you know, uh looking back, even before the creation of the Water District, when Water District was created in 1973, looking back, it would seem to me that uh there was no real planning on what to do 50 years from the, uh from 1973. Because uh if we did plan for what would happen in 2023, I think this problem would not be here. And human. Kung ato pang, kung daan patan nagpreparar nga ang 16,000 kanyan to nga consumers, mahimo ng 200,000 karoon, at least we could have prepared. Kung inong tanawin, ang, tanawin mo ang mga water supply na to sa Water District, majority are all deep well. Wala kita main source nagikan sa bukid. Using the low gravity, it could have been simpler ang pagdistribute. Nanahana man na, naitabok na man na, di nasa na to na ma-mausab kay di ko na change history. Hantod na dugangan, na compounded, na daot na sa na to mga linya, pantayak na. So wasan na to na ma-preparahi. So when we need rehabilitation, uh daku ang kaayong gikinahalan, dili lang kay 1 billion. If you overhaul the entire water system, Kagendyo Oro, you need billions of pesos. So kaning atong mga plano karoon, for me, these are uh kining cosmetic uh solutions. Bonded solution. So, unseman, are we going to repeat this mistake for the next 20 years? Munya akong pangutana sa challenge of Water District. Plan for the next 20 years. Today, we have consumers of 200,000, perhaps 20 years from now, we will have a consumer of 1 million. The speed, the car that the city is going on, the economy, ang atong populasyon, grabe kayo. So ang akong suggestion, Mr. Chairman, dili man na suggestion, pangutana pa ni. Let's be frank, can you afford? Do you have, I think you have the expertise, but do you have the political will or the capacity to prepare all these things, these preparations? Or are we going to give it to the private sector? Just like the Manila? Where they have the capital, they have the money. Kita kada liyok, buti pangutang, water kaotangan. Kita sa Sida, kita na siya mutabang, but we need a lot of time that. Uh lugar, nagpinarangka ay lang kita, I'm not saying I've seen the bullies, no. Kay bismo kani sa Manila, wala naamang giapon ng mga tao diya, pero mani man. But would it be possible for us nga iprivilatize na to? Just like in Middle Manila, where it was given to the Middle Pacific? Or are we going to maintain the status quo now? The same setup? Do you think, Tony, I know nga, mas, I know nga, you love the interest of the people more than is the anything else. Can you give us a, a bull's eye, the ballpark uh idea? Whether it would be for the best interest of the city and the people Kagendyo Oro? If you will just give it to the private sector? Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Presiding Chair. Uh yes, uh thank you for that, uh Councilor Cabanlas. Uh in response to that, the Kagendyo Water District uh in partnership with VAE or the Vitens Venus International, uh we are preparing since last year, we are preparing the master plan of the Water District that would address 5, 10, 15, 20, even up to 50 years. And this is based on the population growth of the uh the city as well as the uh in uh aligning with the programs and developments of the of the government. So we have that, we are currently uh finalizing our uh master plan. And uh then that will be integrated with our business plan also. Now with the question of the possibility of the uh being a uh collaborating with the private sector, uh we still believe that uh it is the primordial obligation or responsibility of the government to provide basic services is water. And with, if there's would be proposals that the Board of Directors and the management would study this carefully. And of course, we will assure the uh City Council and the government of the Kagendyo City that we will not be a roadblock to improvement. We will not be a deterrent to any programs that would uh benefit the majority of our population. So we will study carefully any proposal that would come to us through our um able uh Board of Directors.
Thank you very much, Ingeneryang. Uh anyway, uh we understand that uh this is the new management. And uh we have the new set of uh Board of Directors. Uh because really, uh as per observation of my colleagues, obviously, the situation there, the plan requires a reactive mode of uh coming up with uh solutions to the current issues. So uh what has been implied by uh not re- not only implied but emphasized by uh Councilor Cabanlas is that we should come up with a projection 10, 20, 30 or more years from now. Right now, our population is uh almost a million, that is considering the residents alone. But uh our daytime population here, according to this statistical data, we have about 2.5 million. And the number of households is close to 200,000. So 10, 20, 30 years from now, how many households are we going to serve? So that's now uh the implication of the manifestation of Councilor Cabanlas. Our planning should be a little proactive. So anyway, uh thank you very much to uh uh the management and uh of uh the Kagendyo Water District and uh the members of the Board of Directors for coming over and answering to our invitation. I hope that this will be a good start of uh the partnership of COWD and the LGO of Kagendyo Oro City. Uh we hope that we can come up with a concept that would best serve our people. So again, thank you very much.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would like to thank uh Ingeneryang for uh enlightening us, lighting us uh, enlightening the members of City Council, the people Kagendyo Oro. And I move for the uh to include the manifestation statements of uh Ingeneryang in the minutes of our uh journal. But uh we have invited also to speak Ms. Nelia Lee, or the the chairman, the chairperson of the board.
Yeah, uh can we have a few words from uh the chairman of the Board of Directors? Before uh we request them to take uh pictures for posterity. Uh Mama Nelia Lee.
Hello, good afternoon, everyone, Presiding Chair. Good afternoon and the members of the council. I'm Nelia Lee and I am the Board of Director Chairperson of the Kagendyo Water District. Uh I'm happy that we are invited and while listening Ingeneryang explaining all the questions and he answer it uh correctly. And I know we have so many challenges to take, but we are standing on it. That's why we reach up to 50 years now. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, um Ms. Nelia Lee, the chairman of the Board of Directors of the Kagendyo Water District. Can we invite them for us?
Yeah, we are not the enemy of uh Water District. Water District is part of the City Council Kagendyo. In fact, for us, uh Water District is the most experienced water supplier of Kagendyo. We cannot exchange him with anybody else's. But we just want them to be frank with us.
Yeah.
Uh sir, I-
Picture.
Uh sir, with the information also of the City Council, we are belong to a type E category and a top five all over the Philippines.
Congratulations for that, uh ma'am, yeah.
Uh I tho- I hope uh the people Kagendyo Oro will also feel the same. Okay, picture, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Pictures, please, yeah.
Oh, no, yes, reses, reses, reses.
Uh expired, uh expired.
Session resumes. Back to our Majority Floor Leader.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we are moved to lift the suspension of the rules.
Suspension lifted.
So we go to the business every day, to our agenda proper. Uh omnibus uh motion for approval, item one and item two. May I request our city secretary, the chief secretary, to read these proposals?
Secretary recognized.
For omnibus motion, item one and two, item one, proposed resolution number 2023 dash 347, returning to the barangay council of barangay Agusan, the city its ordinance number 001, series- the city its ordinance number 001, series of 2023, covering its annual budget for CY 2023 with an estimated income of 23,633,083 pesos. Item two is proposed resolution number 2023-348, returning to the barangay council of barangay Bugu, the city its ordinance number 1-23, series of 2023, covering its annual budget for CY 2023 with an estimated income of 35,084,467 pesos, with the information that said ordinances are operative in the entirety. Documents in support thereof are attached in the agenda, sponsoring committees, committee on barangay affairs, and committee on laws and rules.
Mr. Chairman, may I request Councilor Roger Abadai be recognized?
Councilor Abadai is recognized.
I move proposed resolution 2023-347 and 348 approve favorably.
Any second. Approve.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Any second. Approve.
Omnibus motion number two, item two, three, and four, five. May I request the secretary to read these proposals?
Item three is proposed resolution number 2023-349, returning to Sangguniang Kapataan of barangay Agusan, the city its resolution number two, series of 2023, covering its annual budget for CY 2023 with an estimated income of 2,341,708 pesos. Item four is proposed resolution number 2023-350, returning to Sangguniang Kapataan of barangay Oswagan, the city its resolution number four, 2023, covering its annual budget for CY 2023 with an estimated income of 5,283,842 pesos. Item five is proposed resolution number 2023-351, returning to Sangguniang Kapataan of barangay Patag, the city its resolution number two, series of 2023, covering its annual budget for CY 2023 with an estimated income of 1,974,162 pesos, with the information that said resolutions are operative in their entirety. Documents in support thereof are attached as sponsoring committees, committee on sports and youth development, and committee on laws and rules.
Mr. Chairman, may I move that Councilor J. Rua Pasqual be recognized?
Councilor Pasqual is recognized.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. I move to approve proposed resolution number 2023-349, proposed resolution number 2023-350, proposed resolution number 2023-351.
Any second. Approve.
Move to dispense, second and final reading.
Any second. Move, seconded, approve.
Number six, item number six, Mr. Chairman, may I request talks to read the proposal?
Item number six is proposed ordinance number 2023-176, appropriating the sum of 23,474 pesos and 92 cent tabos from the item Personal Services Salary Savings under item number four, Development Management Officer III, Oral Trade and Investment Promotion Center for the period January 1 to 17, 2023, in the 2023 annual budget to be made available for the payment of the salary differential of Ms. Charlotte Y. Bakongis, Administrative Officer III in the amount of 11,751 pesos and 96 cent tabos, and Ms. Oksana S. Custudio, Project Development Officer III in the amount of 11,722 pesos and 96 cent tabos. Both of the same office, who were promoted effective December 1, 2022. Committee sponsors, committee on finance, budget appropriations, and committee on laws and rules.
Mr. Chairman, may we recognize Councilor Gurli Balaba?
Councilor Gurli Balaba is recognized.
Yes, I move for the approval of proposed ordinance number 2023-176.
Any second. Move, seconded, approve.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Any second. Approve.
Item number seven.
Item seven is proposed ordinance number 2023-177, appropriating the sum of 42,812 pesos and 52 cent tabos from the item Personal Services Salary Savings under item number four, Development Management Officer II, Oral Trade and Investment Promotion Center for the period February 1 to 2023, in the 2023 annual budget to be made available for the payment of the salary for the period December 1 to 31, 2022 of Mr. Hanen Is Legendab, who was appointed as economist II on permanent status of the same office effective December 1, 2022. Committee sponsors, committee on finance, budget appropriations, and committee on laws and rules.
Mr. Chairman, may we recognize Councilor James Judith to sponsor this ordinance?
Considering that everything is in order, Mr. Chair, I move that proposed ordinance number 2023-177 be approved.
Any second. Move, seconded, approve.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman, on second and final reading.
Any second. Approve.
Item number eight, talk.
Item number eight is proposed ordinance number 2023-178, authorizing Honorable City Mayor Rolando Iui, representing the city government of Cagendio River, to enter into and sign the memorandum of agreement with the herein listed 52 parties, representing the religious sector, national government agencies, local government units, academ, non-government organizations, covering the collaboration of the parties in the strengthening and institutionalization of the Cagendio River Basin Management Council under the terms and conditions stipulated therein, sponsoring committees, committee on environment, and committee on laws and rules.
May I request, Mr. Chairman, the recognition of Councilor Abadai as the sponsor?
Councilor Abadai is recognized.
Thank you very much, Presiding Chairman. The, I move to approve the proposed ordinance number 2023-178.
Move, any second. Approve.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Any second.
Number nine, item number nine. Item number nine is proposed ordinance number 2023-179, authorizing Honorable City Mayor Rolando Iui, representing the city government of Cagendio River, to enter into and sign the deed of donation, intervivos, with Attorney Edgar S. Cabanlas as donor, covering the donation of the latter's 3,000 square meter property, a portion of lot 20859, covered under OCT number 428, located in barangay Tuburan, the city aside for the proposed Integrated National Swine Production Initiatives for Recovery and Expansion Program, INSPIRE, under the terms and conditions stipulated therein, sponsoring committees, committee on subdivision and landed state, and the committee on laws and rules.
May I request, Mr. Chairman, Councilor George Goxing to sponsor this?
Councilor Goxing is recognized.
Salamat, Majority Floor Leader, to the sponsor of the donation. I find no problem with this, so I move to approve the proposed ordinance number 2023-179.
Any second. Nanatay Bagunga Yuta, donated by our Majority Floor Leader. Okay, clarification. The honorable James Judith will answer for the donor, no? So coming from a legal expert. So pending motion, okay, another manifestation.
Mr. Chair, if my colleagues may consider in relation with this ordinance or donation, in a proper time, I am moving that it is so included up because of the benevolent act of our colleagues, it will be given also commendation and appreciation.
At the proper time.
A proper time.
So there's a pending motion, any second? So move for the donation, seconded, approve.
Move to approve, second and final reading.
Any second. So it's move and seconded for this presentation, for the approval of the second final reading. Approve.
Item, uh, ten A. Omnibus motion for approval of ten A and B. Item ten A, proposed ordinance number 2023-180, authorizing Honorable City Mayor Rolando Iui, representing the city government of Cagendio River, to enter into and sign the memorandum of agreement on ATM payroll facility with the Land Bank of the Philippines, represented by its president, Cecilia C. Romeo, through its branch head, EVP Ligaya El Padilla, covering the collaboration of the parties in the implementation of the ATM payroll facility for the permanent contractual, casual, and job order personnel of the city government of Cagendio River under the terms and conditions stipulated therein. Item 10B, proposed ordinance number 2023-181, authorizing Honorable City Mayor Rolando Iui, representing the city government of Cagendio River, to enter into and sign the memorandum of agreement with the Land Bank of the Philippines, represented by its president, Cecilia C. Romeo, through its branch head, EVP Ligaya El Padilla, covering the use of a 2 square meter area for establishment of 1 unit ATM booth at the city hall premises, Cagendio River City, under the terms and conditions stipulated therein, sponsoring committee, committee on finance, budget and appropriations, and committee on laws and rules.
Mr. Chairman, may I request that Councilor Gurli Balaba be recognized?
Councilor Gurli Balaba is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With this, siguro nanatay ATM, no, dari sa tuang kampang, which is very convenient for our employees. So I move, Mr. Chair, for the approval of proposed ordinance number 2023-180 and ordinance number 2023-181.
Any second. Move and seconded, approve.
Move to approve on second and final reading, Mr. Chairman.
Any second. Approve.
Number 11, Mr. Chairman, talk.
Item 11 is proposed ordinance number 2023-182, approving the preliminary subdivision development plan, PSDP of St. Therese Phase 2 Subdivision Project located in barangay Balolang, the city, with an area of 23,618 square meters, containing 47 lots under BP 220, as applied for by the A Brown Company Incorporated, represented by its compliance supervisor, Joylen F. Magadan, subject to the compliance of the conditions imposed by the City Housing and Urban Development Department and the City Engineers Office, both the city, sponsoring committee, committee on subdivision and landed state, and committee on laws and rules.
May I request, Mr. Chairman, that Councilor Joey Abu be recognized?
Councilor Joey Abu is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move for the approval of proposed ordinance number 2023-182.
Any second. Yes, manifestation from Councilor Abadai.
This is not an objection, but I, one of the signatory for the approval of this, endorsement of this ordinance, but I just go over the attachment, especially this proposed ordinance 11 and 12, the same owner, regards to the commento of our, uh, ilar di itibisyon, that the portion of block 6 and 7 and 8 of St. Therese Phase 1 encloses on Phase 2 with lot number 327. As indicated on the plan, hence for review and submit, and submit the approved development permit, Phase 1 for reference. In the same manner, I propose ordinance the same, it encloses, uh, encloses, uh, St. Therese 1, increase to St. uh, Phase, uh, St. Therese Phase 2. So shall we approve this one, pending submission of the requirements as indicated by the, uh, the agency?
May I request the committee chairman to clarify this?
The actual, the specific subdivision plan, Mr. Chairman, will be submitted during the submission of the DP, the development permit. Uh, this is important because it is specialized housing component of, uh, A Brown. Pero ang actual na gede na specific na, ang technical plan sa entire project will be submitted during the submission of sayang application for kininga development permit. Kini locational clearance, lini, dili ini siya, dili. Location langa, kina dia.
So it's just for the locational clearance?
Locational clearance, this is not the development permit that we are talking about. Kini langsa, walapan isay actual gede na specific area, kalanisya kininga certification langa, kininga area is suitable for subdivision.
So those requirements shall be required only upon the application of the development permit? Okay, so we have pending motion, any second? So it's hereby approved.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Any second. Approve.
Item 12, talk.
Item 12 is proposed ordinance number 2023-183, approving the preliminary subdivision development plan, PSDP of Navona Court Subdivision Project located in barangay Lombia, the city, with an area of 16,144 square meters, containing 164 lots units under PD 957, as applied for by the Jan Dof Ventures Corporation, represented by its permits and licenses supervisor, Sofia El Rookie, subject to the compliance of the conditions imposed by the City Housing and Urban Development Department and the City Engineers Office, both the city, committee sponsors, committee on subdivision and landed state, and committee on laws and rules.
I will move for this, Mr. Chairman, I move for the approval of this proposed ordinance number 2023-183.
Any second. Move and seconded, it's hereby approved.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Oh, for its finality, oh, okay, there is a manifestation coming from Councilor James Judith.
Ako lang pangutan ang, klarong ko lang, para sa kong kalamdagan, Mr. Chair, kay sa 11, pareggyapon sila nga sa preliminary subdivision development plan, kay nakabutang din, containing 47 lots. kay nakabutang din, containing 47 lots under BP 220. Mano pagabot sa number 12, nga item sa atong agenda, maugyapon containing 164 lots units, pero under PD 957. Para lang sa akong kalamdagan.
Ang BP 222 is socializing. Uh, ang 957 is economic.
So, cleared? So, pending motion, any second? So, moved and seconded. It's hereby approved.
Move to, move to approve, second and final reading.
For finality, any second. So, moved, seconded.
Uh, move to include items 13 and 14 in our present agenda now, Mr. Chairman.
So, move for inclusion, any second? So, moved, seconded, for inclusion.
So, item 13, talk.
Item 13 is proposed resolution number 2023-352, expressing the 28 city councils' unequivocal support to the measles rubilia oral polio vaccine supplemental immunization activity, by the relief international Philippines to protect children against vaccine preventable diseases, and urging the 8 barangay councils in the city to extend full support to its social mobilization and public awareness activities so as to influence their respective constituents, specifically parents, and to address refusals and hesitances about vaccination or immunization, subject to styling proponents, all members.
Okay, so unanimously move and unanimously seconded, Mr. Chairman?
So, since it was unanimously approved and seconded, hereby approved.
Move to approve, second, second and final reading.
Any second. Hereby approved.
Move na to include item 14?
Item 14 is proposed resolution number 2023-353, commending councillor Edgar S. Cabanlas, the majority floor leader, for his benevolent act of donating 3,000 square meter of lot, subject to styling, proponents, all members.
So, uh, since, uh, he's not willing to have it move, I may as well, uh, have it move and seconded, and it's hereby approved. Any objection? Since there's no objection, okay, any, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, we will not prostrate the extraordinary generosity of the donor, Mr. Chairman, our colleagues. So, I move to, uh, um, pass that resolution.
So, it's been moved, any second?
Provided, Mr. Chair, that it should be put in the resolution, Mr. Chair, that without prejudice to further donations by attorney Cabanlas.
So, it will be subject to styling, any objection? So, it is hereby approved. Okay, any more item?
Uh, okay, so move to approve, second, final reading.
Moved and seconded, hereby approved.
There being no other matters to take up, uh, Mr. Chairman, I move to adjourn.
Session adjourned.